Ed Gaston, I'm here. I mean, this is like forty years of monitoring. By try hydro, you know, and blowing out what we're already on the ground, so. Please understand that whatever does still down here, and sometimes it's hard to get something that's tested, toxic, back out, it's better to protect as best you can. Do you have any questions? You don't want to know who my birthday is?
I think you can give that information out these days.
I'll be there in one. Thanks.
Sheriff, move to close the public contact.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Changes to the agenda?
We're all stirred in Bailey, too.
Yes.
Good morning. Just briefly, we advertised three times in the paper, had a held a non mandatory prebid meeting September eight twelve. We've, we had like eight client holders, but we only got two bids. Night River and Intermountain Slurry Seal, Intermountain Slurry Seal was a little under two and a half. Night River was two point nine, Intermountain was a non resident bidder, Night River was a resident bidder. Looking by first, I prefer it's an almost sealed. Still a better. Dr. Rob, and he had a budget for three point nine million for projects, so we'll be able to chip seal and strike, take care of all the roads and town papers. And.
And it was the eleven roads with no exception?
Correct. Yes. We don't foresee any pavement patching or anything beyond still chip seal. But in the end, if you, I have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the force account.
Carter, one percent funding request from J and J Second Chance Small Holdings.
Hello.
So just like you guys heard all the petitions last Tuesday that had applications for city and county, we did have one application just for county, and they're here today. They have about five minutes, just like all the other petitions do.
Come on up.
Good morning, commissioners. Hi, my name is Jennifer, and I'm with J and J Second Chance Small Holdings. Yes, it's a long name, but it kind of tells you a little bit about ourselves. J and J is my daughter, Janet and I, Jennifer, and we started this rescue kind of as something that happened during COVID. We ended up with all these animals being dropped off at our little farm. We ended up with over two hundred and fifty animals now at our rescue. We take animals into schools and help kids learn to read, so the kids read to the goats, and the goat reads the books, which is quite humorous, watching these kids get a happy memory other than just you're wrong, they're not doing well. Well, our goal this year is to create a metayouth building that we can have individuals come out to our rescue and spend time with these animals, doing goat yoga, doing mental health days for businesses to come out and spend, spend time with the animals here at our rescue. In order to do this, we're asking for help from the county of twenty five thousand dollars. We have two bids in from two different contractors, and they fall right just over twenty five thousand dollars, but we have a private person that's willing to raise the rest of the funds. The twenty five thousand dollars will do us a wooden frame building with metal sightings, glass windows and everything. This will also be ADA compliant. Our big thing is that everybody is allowed to come out and spend time with these animals. So. No, it went really fast. I also brought a baby goat in if you guys would like to meet in. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Where are you proposing to build this one?
It's on the rescue.
Okay.
We do own the land outright, and so it's a thirty by forty building that is attached to our baby area where people, where we can allow the goats to come in and spend time with individuals. We also admitted for Highlands House that a garden need being brushed and moved on.
Jennifer, when a bid comes out and wants to use your building or your animals, is there a charge associated with that?
For mental health, no. We do charge if like a corporation wants to come out as a corporate event. If they minor charge basically, it's just to help get other staff in to help us with being able to give them the best experience possible. But mostly, we are a full nonprofit, one hundred percent. We're five oh one two three, registered in the state and federally.
You answered my second question.
We are fully registered. We do have a secondary side, which is a for-profit side, that we go to businesses or corporations that help us raise the funds, so we can keep doing our community outreach programs, such as we go to veterans centers and senior centers and bring baby goats in diapers and clothes, and have the veterans and seniors spend time with the animals as a enrichment activity that will allow them to, we get a lot of great stories of these people going, I remember when I had a goat when we were five, and his name was Billy, and he used to headbutt me every time, and we, we've had individuals that have come up to us and spoken to us that haven't spoken in months. Our goal is with this building allowing those people to be able to come out, you know, during the winter, where we have, you know, darn, we have wind. I mean, we don't have any wind out in Rock River at all, and having a building where we can have individuals go into where it's a safer environment for those that are not as stable on their feet, that can sit down in a chair, in a safer environment, would be wonderful. So this is not only helping us, but it's helping our community be able to do things, and we want to also operate our local forage or anybody else who would like to use it as a community building style of thing.
And it's out in Rock River?
Yes, it is out in Rock River. Yeah.
And does the nonprofit, would the profit side hold the land, or does the nonprofit?
Uh, the for-profit holds the land, and the nonprofit rents it for a dollar a month at that time.
This was a for discussion, so we won't be making a decision right now.
I fully understand. If anybody would like a plier, do pop extras. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, commissioners, for giving me the opportunity for that.
Thirty five acre tract from a one thousand two hundred eleven acre.
Accept the request for an exemption from the large tract subdivision process situated in section two township sixteen north range seventy six west of six principal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven, present for approval quote from CDWG for hardware refresh in the amount not to exceed twenty four thousand thirty seven dollars and twenty cents. Adam.
Thank you. Before you today is essentially this round for this year's recycle for computer refresh. This includes a couple struggling Windows ten workstations that are still user adjacent and need to be replaced. There would be our frontline workstations and all of our public offices. We're going to start seeing kind of a failure rate along those since they're outside of that five year rotation with those, and then several of the detentions that are video, uh, video stations. Those are super old positions that would be replaced and as the spares towards. As a part of this also includes some monitor initiatives, with several very old ones that need to be retired out, and then doing a glass office that is not dual monitor, which is the sheriff's office, would allow us that ability. So we've seen huge efficiency increase. Everyone understands the efficiency you get through a monitor, so looking to shore up on that. Questions for me?
I'm just curious, what's buried?
On a monitor set, it's probably eight to ten years. Essentially, essentially doesn't support display port, right? The DVI, so that you're running through adapters, DGA native barely even pushes ten eighty P, so.
So the fact that you're getting twenty workstations and twenty monitors, that's just a coincidence?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, they have different, there's different avenues for both. That's just where the numbers kind of landed. Yes.
I move that we approve the quote from CDWG hardware refresh in the amount not to exceed twenty four thousand thirty seven dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve, present for approval, evaluation agreement between Ring Central and Albany County, Wyoming for communication systems.
So this, I ask, we will recommend bringing this before you guys, just because of the essentially the large nature of the phone system. So we've all, getting everyone up to speed here, right? We're all kind of understanding that the phone system, it is needing to retire here in twenty twenty five. A couple things, it goes in a patch here at the end of twenty twenty five, and then Mike's all just filed for pay currency. It, I don't know if it's a restructure or true buyout. I haven't seen a lot of information out of that yet, and we're going to have a chance to research it. We do know that there's several adjustments that are coming on that end. So our current system is in a very shaky condition as it is. We've looked at several cloud-based, subscription-based phone systems, as well as a couple on-prem, doing just kind of general matrices, you know, what's good, what's there. My recommendation will be starting here with Ring Central and a group concept. It'll be the IT department, and then we'll be looking for a front-end department to take it on, to stress test the system. Right before we do a big dog and pony show, we want to really make sure that it fits all the needs of Albany County, and we want to make sure that it works in a large, you know, in that corporate environment. So that's kind of the step take, and then after that, we'll be looking, you know, to essentially onboard departments, you know, onboarding the course, right? We provide phones for the course, and just do that dog and pony show, make sure there was something that was missed in the initial VOC or any ideas that we have. I'm going to write, I think my check sheet, my current comparison matrix is probably three pages long, different attributes and things I've been looking for, so. In some of this review, really, when we're looking at spending, you know, a good chunk of money on, you know, renewing the system, you have two avenues you can look at. You can look at Pam and find another on-prem system. You're going to spend two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars to revamp to be exactly where you're at, or you can look at a cloud-based system, which gives you a lot more feature set, there's a lot more development. The only, it's pretty much the only place developments happened for the phone industry in the last five years. And so, you know.
Get you off the podium, sorry.
It's all good. I'd sit up there and talk all day.
Item thirteen, ratify mountain and plains environmental justice grant of application in Bailey.
Morning commissioners, your last meeting, David Gertsch presented a project to you. This is the application for it. I submitted it yesterday, as it was due yesterday by one. So this is just that project. It's a casper offer monitoring project that he had in mind. So the request that we put in was for over a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Twenty three thousand five hundred fifty of that is indirect cost that we put in. Last year, I had you guys approve a ten percent indirect cost on all grants that would allow it. This is actually a fifteen. They didn't want us to put in a ten. They wanted us to put in the de minimis that the feds offer right now, and that is fifteen, so I did put fifteen in, but I figured he would not be happy for that one, so.
No, just the way you wrote it, it's, it's just for monitoring. There's no.
Correct.
No evaluation, or there's no valuation, but it's just for ongoing monitoring.
Correct, yeah. So David actually did majority of the narrative. I told him, I was like, I'm not in your world. I don't understand at all. So he did majority of it. I went in and fine tuned it all for what federal funding usually likes, and we're both finger crossing our fingers and hopefully get the funding. But from what I could tell, it would be voluntary monitoring on wells that already exist, and then possibly for a testing well as well. I actually even had to call my husband on this, and I'm like.
Semi centennial. Two hundred and fiftyth anniversary of the founding of our country. Bailey.
So Commissioner Hoff, you mailed me a couple weeks ago, this grant opportunity, who I believe you got it from Tourism Board.
Yeah, Tourism.
So after reviewing the application, I reached back out to Commissioner Hoff and asked, what would you like to do with it? What direction do you want me to go here? So he asked that I put it on for a discussion item at today's meeting, so that's what I'm doing. This would be a maximum of ten thousand dollars that we can apply for. Commissioner Jones had brought up to me that, hey, maybe like courthouse lights might be good, like the Christmas lights that we do. I don't think it quite falls into what this is. I can certainly ask, there is a contact in here, and I can reach out, but I don't feel it's quite what they're looking for, so.
It was more cultural and historic and impact on.
Yes.
I was thinking of red light blue lights. No idea.
Yes, and the other piece of this is, which I'm unfamiliar with, is there's supposed to be an officially recognized county committee. I don't know who that is, and I again feel like if I reach out to this Nick, he might be able to point me in the right direction for who Albany County's is.
I think we have to form it.
Okay, and we may have to form it, and then you guys can think about it until the next meeting and let me know more ideas, whatever direction you want to go.
But we're going to have to establish an ad hoc committee.
We could just use like Larry Public Arts or Albany County's for our preservation board as the committee?
I don't know. I really don't.
Yes.
I don't. Yeah, I, why don't I reach out to Nick with this funding and get a little more details about what that committee is, and maybe there is one that the county religious is not aware of that is already, and maybe he would know, or what we.
Or just make a, an interested party has that committee.
So I can really do that, come back to you at the next meeting. Okay, in the meantime, you guys think us ideas?
Item.
Yes.
Item fourteen, discuss, uh, fifteen, present for approval approach license for Willow Waters LLC on County Road five thirty Lawrence Road, located in section two township sixteen, range seventy six west.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is for approach license. I think the township section is maybe is familiar to what you did this morning, so they're asking if they access to it from Lawrence Road.
Any issues with it?
Yeah. I move that we heard the approach license for Willow Waters LLC on County Road five thirty Lawrence Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Rob. Item sixteen, present for approval, application for catering permit for Altitude Chop House and Brewery for the Wolf Ranch Event Space Kentucky Derby Party held at one forty two Vista Grand Way, Laramie, Wyoming on May third, twenty twenty five, from two P M to six P M.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. This is an application for catering permit for Altitude Chop House and Brewery, because they are holder of a city liquor license. The city has the letter approving them to use their license outside of the city limits or outside of their jurisdiction. It is on their agenda for tonight, but other than that, it is good to go.
Move to review the application as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming for implementation of the Laramie Growth Area Plan.
We have to move to take from the table. So I move to take from the table the IGA between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners for the implementation of the Laramie Area Growth Area Plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eighteen, present for consideration the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming for implementation of the Laramie Growth Area Plan.
So on talking to the topic, there's no change in the city. They can't guarantee water or any kind of risks for future development in that area. So I am going to move that we decline to sign or enter into agreement with the city of Laramie.
Yeah, I would love to see both planning departments have time to work out and hammer out agreements, but I'm not sure. A declination is the way to go on this one, romantic, after then, with the changes proposed by this commission. And having heard those, those changes announced to public, what, what's the problem with, with the IGA, sort of these groups that went on it?
Okay, I, we have a state statute that requires that the commissioners take into consideration anything that the city wants to do next to the city boundaries, and I think that's sufficient, and is, is good for the county. And so I mean agreement, I would decline this.
And I did talk to the mayor. I, I don't know if this eliminates the growth. I just asked that if he enumerated, and with the planning department, if they have an area that they're looking to develop outside city limits, that they would have a concern, we could certainly be interested in that growth and that development, and maybe get a return key ready for the city, but carte blanche on the map itself, and having fully executable control outside city limits is something with no guarantees. It puts a lot of burden on the county and the planning office, and it provides a lot of benefit to the city should it ever be exercised, but they're turning a lot of control outside.
But my reading, and Matt, you can maybe be helpful to me, is there is nothing declaratory that the city has power over, that the county doesn't have the ability to stop. I think that's a big misunderstanding in what's gone on with the governmental agreement. We know there are cities in Wyoming, one very close to us, that failed to do this type of work, and are bound by subdivisions and growth in the city is becoming really difficult to do. The city and the county spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is the only plan that was awarded in the nation last year, the Growth Area Plan, for its excellence. To stop that and say we should do this by piecemeal is the reason we did the Growth Area Plan. Piecemeal does not allow for smart planning. There's nobody that is going to be forced to be annexed under this. I know that has been bandied about. And so I just, working together with your partners seems to be the smartest way to go. I'm not sure why, I haven't heard it talked about, what is exactly wrong with the plan. It would be nice to hear that out loud, so that people can work on it, the planning offices. I'm not a planner. I'm not certified in that, but we do have people in the planning office within the city and the county that could be helpful with our associated planning and zoning commission within the city and the county. So that seems to be the way to go. I think you throw the baby out with the bathwater by declining this and say, we'll go with it on a case by case basis. We wasted four hundred thousand dollars, whatever the number was, if that's what we're going to do, because we could have done that before, and there's a reason why you don't do that.
We didn't waste it.
Um, I'm not sure what that means. Are you not a member of the county commission?
I am, but we didn't spend four hundred thousand.
We spent somebody on it, two hundred thousand, I think.
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Or eighty.
So, and I actually think, and so do the people who evaluate the plans, think that would have been amazingly widespread, but obviously we have a different take on it. However, when streets don't match up and heights don't match up, that is a failure of plan.
That is why you consider whatever the city wants to do, so that those do match up, and that we, in, in the time that we've had, been under this statute, it's worked very well.
Well, I would disagree with you.
And the, and the city does not partner well with private individuals, and they put themselves in this position because that they do not partner. They dictate, they do not partner.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure how to, to discuss that piece of it. Eighty percent of your constituents live within the city, yours, mine, Commissioner Hoff, and so you have a duty to do the best you can for eighty percent that live here and the twenty percent that live outside the city. Hammering out agreements is how you do that. Throwing away agreements is not how you do that. So obviously, we have a disagreement. Obviously, you know I'm going to vote on this one, but it'll be up to you all to discuss what you didn't like about this agreement, and why you didn't think it could be improved, and you just decided you wanted to throw it away. That's for you to, you're wanting for you to carry. It'll be up for me to decide and to answer to my constituents why I thought this could be improved, and why we should let the process work. I'm willing to have a.
When they had the public hearings, it was very clear when the people came, that the people in the county do not like this.
Well, what metric were you using, Terry? I mean, do you have some data behind that? Anecdotal information is not data to be planned about. So did you take the survey? Was there?
You should have been at the meetings, and then you would have heard.
Oh, I went to all of them.
No, you cannot, because you were not at any of the ones that I was at, and the people outside the city limits were very unhappy with this, because they believed that they were not using the right, I'll say, I'll just go ahead and say it. They were using incorrect data to try to, to force this through, and I am absolutely against this plan. I was against it in the beginning, and it, it does not benefit the county. It benefits the city, but it does not benefit the county.
Well, the city's in the county, and so I.
Outside the city limits, it's, it doesn't benefit. Inside the city, the city has more power all the time, but it takes, it does not allow the people of the county to do what they would like to do with their land. It's another form of control, and it's another form to get people that live in the county to live in the city, because the, the city doesn't want people to live in the county.
Would you point to this document where you would say that that is.
I'm not going to point to the document.
So I, I will push back, Commissioner Gosar. In the plan itself, it does specify to which building standards would be used and executed outside city limits in that zone. So if there's any development, that's why I say it doesn't harm anybody trying to do a development outside city limits that would seek annexation, because then the, all those structures could be built, and the city could oversee that until it's annexed, but it does lay out in the city's document that the, the building code would be specified for construction of dwellings outside city limits.
You know, that happens in Laramie County right today.
I do, and I'm not trying to create a problem for the city, and there is a need for all of this, but this is casting a huge net over development that may or may not ever actually occur. It, it becomes burdensome to our planning department, because if it falls under the mapping that is laid out and agreed upon, then it, it falls to the county's planning department, all four people in that planning department to enforce what the city is requesting.
It's interesting none of them are here to talk about that.
I realize that. I, I wasn't worried that they weren't going to be here.
So obviously, you all have decided what you'll do, and you know which way I'm going to vote. So I think it behooves this commission to understand why there are building codes in Laramie County, because it's fire beware at this point in Albany County. You do not have to build the code. Fire, flood, there's nothing that, and so if you are a buyer in the county without those recommends, without those oversight, you get what you buy. Laramie County is a different approach, and so maybe, maybe that's how we want to roll here, maybe we don't. I would like to know if I bought in the county that the home was going to stand for what I purchased it for, to be a home that didn't have problems, but.
There's plenty of problems with homes in the city.
Right, and they can be addressed by code. So fair enough, do what you will. I think that this is a plan that could be improved upon, and I think we should send it out to both planning offices with our direction on how to improve it, but that's, that would be my vote.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to deny entering into the intergovernmental agency agreement between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming for implementation of Laramie Growth Area Plan.
Second, all those in, in opposition?
Well, I think you have to ask in favor and then.
Oh, in favor, okay.
Aye.
Aye, all those in opposition?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, motion carries. Item nineteen, executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A I I. You have a motion?
Uh, move to enter into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.